Hey everybody, welcome to Revelation Bible Study. This is our review for chapter four, a little bit of, excuse me, session four. We're just in chapter two. This is a little bit different. I keep working with the formats as maybe you've seen in the connect. We're trying to upgrade our digital presence, trying to do a little better with video and stuff. And so today I get to talk to you face to face and I'm going to work from the lesson sheet again. I love doing the PowerPoints, but it takes a lot of extra time each week. And I'm not sure they're any better than just jumping in, just like we do in class. So let's get going. We saw at the end of the last session, John was preparing to write to the seven churches that Jesus asked him to address. Notice that when we saw that scene of Jesus last week with all of those fantastical descriptions, Jesus was, you know, was, it was a heavenly vision, had the hair white as snow, had fire coming out of his eyes, had the sword coming out of his mouth, all of those things. We talked a little bit about that and we're going to get back to some more of those today. That was a scene of Christ as he appeared in heaven. Now today we're coming back to the earth, which is where the churches are. Remember this kind of shift happens a lot. It happens frequently in Revelation. It's one of the ways we're going to try to keep everything straight, keep the narrative straight in reading through this apocalyptic. You've got to always check and see, are we reading a scene in heaven? Are we reading a scene on earth? Are we reading a scene scattered somewhere in the solar system or the universe or somewhere else? So we were in, on earth, we've been to heaven, now we're coming back to earth. The other thing is to understand the action we're reading. Is it happening in the present? Is it happening in the past? Or is something that's future oriented? Is it something that is yet to come? We'll always try to keep those kinds of things straight and that will help you. One, it's one of the things that makes this book confusing to people. They just read it like it's all straight through and it, it doesn't really happen that way. Now, last time we noted that each of these seven letters is going to follow a particular format. There will always be an identification of Christ. Christ will say, I am, and then he will give us an identification. All of those were what we just read in the last chapter. We're going to see them, they, they pull right back out. Christ then will say, I know something about you, about your church, and he will tell us. Then there will appear either statements of commendation or condemnation, sometimes both. But Jesus gives an evaluation of the church. Then there's an appeal from Christ to hold fast onto something or to, to do something and to listen to what the spirit is saying to the churches. Finally, there is at the end of each letter, a promise of a reward or a result. Faithful living will result in something and those are definitely looking forward to the future. So this format's going to be important. If you have it printed out there, you'll want to hold on to these one, two, three, four, five. You'll want to know what those are supposed to, how those work. Having said that, I'm getting my copy of the Bible study out so that I can follow along too. All right, so let's begin. As we get into chapter two, Christ says, "To the angel of the church in Ephesus, write, 'The one who holds the seven stars in his right hand, the one who walks among the seven golden lampstands, says this: I know your deeds and your toil and perseverance, and that you cannot tolerate evil men, and you put to the test those who call themselves apostles, and they are not, and you found them to be false. And you have perseverance and have endured for my name's sake and have not grown weary; but I have this against you, that you have left your first love. Therefore remember from where you have fallen, and repent, and do the deeds you did at first; or else I am coming to you and will remove your lampstand out of its place, unless you repent. Yet this you do have, that you hate the deeds of the Nicolaitans, which I also hate. He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches. To him who overcomes, I will grant to eat of the tree of life, which is in the paradise of God.'" Whew, I love hearing that scripture read. I, I feel like in class we should say, "The word of God for the people of God, thanks be to God." Well, we know that Ephesus is the first city on this list and there are probably at least a couple of reasons for that. Number one, Ephesus was the major city in the region with a population of around 250,000 people, a quarter of a million people 2,000 years ago. So this is a major city, not quite as large as Rome, but pretty big. It was a major port city, which meant that there were people always coming here from all over the known world, lots of shipping, lots of commerce. It was also the closest of the churches to John's physical location on Patmos. Remember we looked at that map in last week's session. And Asia Minor, today is the country of Turkey and here's the Mediterranean ocean. And so these seven cities are kind of arranged along the coast and the island of Patmos right out here in the, in the, right off the coast. So this is Ephesus, it's the first city, the closest city. Now, it's also interesting that Ephesus is home to a massive temple dedicated to the goddess Diana or Artemis, if you use the Greek version, you know, there's Roman names for the gods and Greek names for the gods. Her temple was listed as one of the seven wonders of the ancient world. You know, think about that, what you got, the pyramids in Egypt, you got the, what? The Hanging Gardens of Babylon, you know, you get the idea. So this temple in Ephesus is one of the seven. We also know that the apostle Paul was in this city back in the sixties. Remember that, you know, when all the hippies were coming out in the sixties? This was the literal sixties. See chapter, Acts, chapter 19 and 20, and you can read about Paul journeying to Ephesus. "He warned of the false teachers that would attempt to come in and distort the truth of the gospel of Christ." Now, let's see what's happened in the 30 or so years since Paul was there. And let's go through our pattern, look back to the text and we will notice some things here. Number one, how does Christ identify himself to this church? "The one who holds the seven stars in his right hand, the one who walks among the seven lampstands." Where have we heard that before? Where have we seen that? It was in the vision of Christ back in chapter one. What is it that Christ knows about this church? He says, "I know your deeds and your toil and your perseverance, and I know that you cannot tolerate evil men, evil ones. You're putting to test those who call themselves apostles, and they're not." So they're, they're doing a pretty good job here and, and Christ knows that they are hanging in there. He knows that they're continuing their work, they're continuing their toil for Christ. So he knows this is a pretty hard working place. He also knows they're trying to resist those false teachers that Paul had warned them about. And we're going to talk about the Nicolaitans. They are in this church and they're also in the, the third church that we're going to look at today in Pergamum. I'll say more about the Nicolaitans at that, at that point. Now, does Christ have words of commendation? Does he commend them or is it condemnation? Does he condemn them? Or are there, is there a little bit of both here? Well, he did commend them, didn't he? "I know your deeds," and he said, "I also know that you're putting to test those who call themselves apostles, but they're not. You have found them to be false." And he says, "For your perseverance that you've endured, for my name's sake, I know that you've not grown weary." So he's, he's commending them. You're doing some things that are pretty good, but notice, he says in verse four, "But I have this against you: you have left your first love." Now we had a little, good bit of discussion on that. What is the first love for the church? And we talked about the kinds of things that they might've done when they first heard about Jesus, when they first learned how to worship, how to serve, how to care for one another. What does Christ ask for us to do? We know from reading the gospel stories, Jesus said, "Well, this is how people will know that your mind, when you love one another, when you love God, when you love your neighbor." Maybe these were some of the things that they have left. Maybe they've become concerned about, I don't know, other things. Again, it's a big city, there's a lot of stuff going on around them. Maybe they feel like they needed to compete with the temple of Diana. You know, they're drawing big crowds and we're just a little bitty church. Maybe we should try some of their programs. You'll have to think about that again. I'm sorry you didn't get to hear the class discussion. Or if you're watching this and you were in class, just think about some of those things we talked about. So little, he commends them, but he also challenges them. And then what does he ask them to do? He says, "I want you to remember from where you have fallen, and repent, and do the deeds that you did at first." Okay, get back to the most basic things. Do those things that you used to do. Whatever they were doing, Christ is asking them to turn from their current direction. And then he gives an, "Or else, or else I am coming to you and I will remove your lampstand out of its place." Remember, we also saw that in the opening vision. The lampstands, seven of them represented the seven churches. They're in place, they're shining. He also talked about the seven stars. Those, he says, "I hold those in my hand." Those were the angels or the messengers in each church. So Christ is with his church and he's got his hand on his church. But evidently they're kind of pursuing some of their own directions and he wants them to change that. He does comment and said, "Oh, this you do have, that you hate the deeds of the Nicolaitans, which I also hate." And again, we'll talk about Nicolaitans in just a moment, but he knows they're being opposed. Then comes the, the challenge. "He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches." And then comes the promise. "To the one who overcomes, I will grant to eat from the tree of life, which is in the paradise of God." Those of you that have been through our Genesis study, have you heard that before? Where was the tree of life? Where was the paradise of God? It's right there in those opening chapters in the book of Genesis, one, two, three. So we've got a rooting here. You're going to return to that paradise. You're going to have access to the tree of life for those who stick with it and overcome. We're getting a look at a battle here and I often remind myself, and I like to remind others about these stories of the Bible, they're true to life. It's just as true for the first hearers then as it is for us today. One of the challenges is about churches that lose sight of love in their battle over interpretations of scripture and doctrine and trying to say, well, who's right? We're right. No, yeah, over there you're wrong. And that battle can become so divisive that you forget about love. Ephesians, the church to the Ephesians reminds us, go back to your first love. So I'll be interested to hear your take on that when we get a chance. So let's go to the second church. This is now the church in Smyrna, next church up the way. "To the angel of the church in Smyrna, write, 'The first and the last, who was dead and has come to life, says this: I know your tribulation and your poverty, but you are rich; and the blasphemy by those who say they're Jews, and they're not, but are a synagogue of Satan. Do not fear what you are about to suffer. Behold, the devil is about to cast some of you into prison, so that you will be tested and you will have tribulation for ten days. Be faithful until death.'" Oh, sorry, I thought my computer cut off. "Be faithful until death, and I will give you the crown of life. He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches; and he who overcomes will not be hurt by the second death." Okay, so we want to do the same thing here. We're going to go over those same five questions. How does Christ identify himself to this church? Well, he's the first and last, the one who was dead and has come to life. That's quite a claim. This is a resurrection claim, right? And what is it that Christ knows about this church? He says, "I know your tribulation, I know your poverty." Evidently this was a church that didn't have a lot of money. Most of these churches were struggling for one reason or another. These were poor in terms of cash and other things, but notice he says, "But you are rich." What are they rich in? Well, let's keep reading. "Christ also knows the blasphemy by those who say they are Jews and are not, but are a synagogue of Satan." We're going to learn something interesting about this, this place of Ephesus in, in just a minute. They, and the whole synagogue of Satan. But what we know here, and we talked about this a week or two ago, is that the Jews, and what we mean here is not all Jews everywhere, the Jewish leaders in the town. The Jewish religion, Judaism, by this time, we're around 90, 95. They have been officially recognized by Rome and they are legally protected by Rome. But the Christians who originally were seen as just a division of Judaism. And for the first few years, the Christians were protected because the Jews were protected. But that hasn't gone so well. And now these Jewish leaders are actively saying to the Roman officials, hey, look, they're not part of us, you need to root those guys out. Remember they crucified Jesus because they accused him of trying to overthrow the Roman emperor. The Jewish leaders told the Roman officials, hey, this guy wants to be a king and he wants to take the place of Caesar. Well, that's gotten worse. And so now Christ says, "I know you're being blasphemed, that there are people who say they're Jews and they're saying bad things against you. They're a synagogue of Satan. And look, I, I don't want you to be afraid. Do not fear what you are about to suffer. The devil is about to cast some of you into prison and you're going to be tested and you're going to have tribulation for 10 days." Jesus says, "I know it's tough. I know you're going to be cast into prison." And we get this 10 days. There's another use of numbers. Now, again, the numbers almost always mean something beyond what they say. Was Jesus trying to tell them, some of you are going to get thrown in and it's a 10 day sentence? You know, but don't worry, in less than two weeks you'll be out. Probably not intended to be taken literally 10 days. But we hear this in comparison to some of the other numbers. It's not a thousand days, it's not a hundred days, it's 10 days. It's short and it has a time limit. Some of you are going to find yourselves in prison. Don't worry, you'll be there for a while. It's not going to be easy, but there will come an end. Jesus knew what it was like to be arrested, to be beaten. And he's trying to give them a, I think, a touch of hope. Now, notice that then he tells them, "Be faithful until death." That's kind of difficult, right? Be faithful until death. But who is this that's talking to them? Go back to the identification of Christ. This is the first and the last, the one who was dead and has now come to life. He's been where some of them are going to go. So what does he appeal to them to do? Be faithful, hold on, hold on, even if it costs you your life. And what is promised to them? "I will give you the crown of life. He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches. Those who overcome will not be hurt by the second death." Now hold on just a second. Okay, thanks. I, somebody was trying to get my attention and I got a little swallow of water while I was over there. So how do we put all of this together? Now, a little background on Smyrna is helpful. Smyrna was a very rich city because of all of that trade. It's a very prosperous merchant city. There's a, a very strong middle class, upper middle class of merchants. Some of those resident Jews who had been in Smyrna for several years were among them. They're the ones that had made peace with Rome and they didn't want anybody rocking the boat. And so that's why we get these accusations that the Jews in the synagogue of Satan, strong words, were, were persecuting these Christians. We also know there's a lot of religion here. There were temples to the original goddess Roma. There was a temple to the emperor here. Civil religion was very popular. And I'm going to tell you, we had a big discussion about civil religion. The intertwining of the church or the, the religion and the state and the government. Think about that. And we had a lot of discussion over civil religion in our day and where we come down in terms of the separation of church and state. Persecution of Christians was very real here. There were many Christians thrown into prison. One of the most famous of the early Christian martyrs was a fellow by the name of Polycarp. He was a priest and in fact, he was the bishop of Smyrna. He oversaw churches all throughout the region. Some historians say that Polycarp may have been ordained by John, the writer of this work. So Polycarp's a very real, very, what am I trying to say? A historical figure that we know about, not just from the Bible. In the next letter that we'll read in a moment, you're going to hear the mention of Antipas, who was also a pastor and a bishop. He was in the town of Pergamum and was martyred, was killed by the emperor Nero. So when Jesus tells this church at Smyrna to be faithful unto death, it was a very real possibility. But the reward is a crown of life. Now this is, this is where the Greek helps us. This is not the usual royal crown that a king would wear. Many of you may have seen the recent coronation of King Charles in Great Britain. Did you see that great big huge crown they brought out? And while the choir was singing and all that, and they put that big old honking crown on his head? That is a diademata in Greek, a diadem. We have that language reflected in one of our hymns. "Bring forth the royal diadem." That's the crown. Everybody knows the king wears that. But here, when Jesus says, "I'm going to give to you a crown of life," the word is stephanos in Greek. And this is the crown, it's usually a laurel garland, leaves and placed on the head. It was given to the winners in the ancient Greek Olympics. It was the gold medal of the day. But it was that, that athlete's crown, that crown of, of leaves that is to be given. And Jesus picks that imagery up and he says, "Your crown is going to be a crown of life." Second death, what about it? It's going to come back up and we're going to have a more extensive discussion about that later in chapter 20 of Revelation. Remember when we get to that, that it was mentioned here in the letter to Smyrna. And Christ says, "Those of you who overcome, don't worry about the second death." All right, I better get finished here. Our third and final church for today. "And to the angel of the church in Pergamum, write, 'The one who has the sharp, two-edged sword, says this: I know where you dwell, where Satan's throne is; and you hold fast my name, and did not deny my faith, even in the days of Antipas, my witness,'" and the word right there in Greek is martyon, my martyr, "my faithful one, who was killed among you, where Satan dwells. But I do have a few things against you, because you have there some who hold the teaching of Balaam, who kept teaching Balak to put a stumbling block before the sons of Israel, to eat things sacrificed to idols, and to commit acts of immorality. So you also have some who in the same way, hold the teaching of the Nicolaitans. We just heard about them. Therefore repent, or else I am coming to you quickly, and I will make war against them with the sword of my mouth. He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches. To him who overcomes, to him I will give some of the hidden manna, and I will give him a white stone and a new name written on the stone, which no one knows but the one who receives it." Okay, I'm going to shoot pretty quickly through this. Follow your outline to sort this out. Pergamum is a city that is dedicated to education. It's known for huge libraries, secondly, excuse me, second only to the library at Alexandria in Egypt. The word parchment, the paper-like substance that was used to write scrolls and used to record these books, that originated here in Pergamum. It is the root word of the name of the city. And so they are very known for their ability to have books, to read, libraries, education, like a university city. There were also lots of temples, including a massive temple to Zeus, right? The numero uno, the head god in the Greek pantheon. And this temple of Zeus was set up on a hill overlooking the city, built in the shape of a throne. You just imagine Zeus sitting there. Zeus is watching you. That's why we saw in the, in the, in the, in the letter where they talked about the, not only the synagogue of Satan, but what was it he said there? "Oh, you dwell where Satan's throne is," and so on and so forth for those kinds of things. Additionally, we have a temple in Pergamum to Asclepius, the god of healing. The symbol for Asclepius was a serpent. And you see wrapped around the pole there, the medical caduceus, the sign of healing. Satan, serpent, hmm, could be some, some play on words going here. It was a very important temple and people came to Pergamum all the time to come to the temple of Asclepius for healing. Now, Balaam and Balak, I gotta go through this, but I can't not read this. You can get the story in Numbers 22. And so Jesus simply uses this story as a background. It's an odd story, it's fascinating. Here's the long and short version of Balaam and why Jesus warned this church. And he said, "Some of you are holding on to the teaching of Balaam, who kept teaching Balak about stumbling blocks." Balaam was a prophet for hire back in the day, way back in the days of Israel in the Hebrew scripture, which basically meant he, he was attuned to the spirit and the spirit would come on him and, and he would speak forth blessings and cursings and many of the, much of the time that was... and many of the, much of the time, those would come true. And so, he was literally for hire. People would hire him to come and pronounce a blessing over their home or their crop or their business or their family. Um, if you show, oh, Balaam the money, he would come and give you a favorable prophecy. But, the exception happens in Numbers 22. When Balaam is hired by a local king named Balak. Balak was having some troubles with Israel and they, you know, had a few skirmishes and Israel was always winning. So, Balak came and said, "Tell you what, I will pay you to come and curse my enemies, the, the children of Israel. I want you to curse them, so I can beat them in a military battle." Balaam said, "Hey, the price sounds right." And so, he is on his way down to issue a curse on the children of Israel. This is the story, you've probably heard this part. He's riding along on a donkey and all of a sudden, a donkey stops. And Balaam looks around, he's like, "What's the deal? Come on, donkey, get going." He swats the donkey. Donkey's not gonna move. "Come on, donkey, I said, I've gotta get down there. They're gonna pay me." Swats the donkey again. Mm-mm, not gonna move. He's beaten that poor donkey half to death when all of a sudden, the donkey's mouth opens and he begins to speak to Balaam. And he says, "What's the matter with you? Can't you see that angel standing in the road?" All of a sudden, Balaam's eyes are open and he sees the angel of the Lord standing with a flaming sword, ready, if they go another step, whoosh, off with his head. Well, you know, they kinda get that whole situation worked out. And Balaam goes around and eventually gets back on the donkey, I guess. And they head down to, uh, the place for Balak. By the way, I have a sermon on this. I love to call it, "Are You Dumber Than a Jackass?" Balaam probably should've turned back, but he goes on down. He takes the money from Balak. And when he stands up to speak the curse, what comes out of his mouth? "But a blessing for the children of Israel." He tries to say, and what he says is a blessing on God's people and on the armies. And Balak asked for his money back, but anyhow, too bad about that. Now, that story comes in here when Jesus says, "You've got some people there who are following the error of Balaam. Are they renting themselves out? Are they following the money? What are they doing to the faith? I don't know." But you combine that with that next phrase, with the Nicolaitans mentioned for the second time now. This is a sect, an early split-off from Christianity that, uh, some attribute to the apostasy or the falling away of one of the original deacons in the church, a man by the name of Nicholas. You find him mentioned in the book of Acts, chapter 6, verse 5. To be honest, we don't know much about this group, but here we have a, a report written down in 636 CE from Isidore of Seville, a historian and a church father, someone who was involved in the church. And he says this about Nicholas. "The Nicolaites, or the Nicolaita, are so-called, from Nicholas, deacon of the church of Jerusalem, who, along with Stephen and the others, was ordained by Peter, they were sat over ministry in the church. He abandoned his wife because of her beauty, so that whoever wanted to might enjoy her. The practice turned into debauchery, with partners, sexual partners, being exchanged in turn." So, we don't know everything that was going on here. We know that temple prostitutes in other places were a part of the worship. Was this church being persuaded to turn aside? Uh, this, this, uh, heresy by Nicholas and the Nicolaitans came to be known as antinomianism, um, against the, the spirit and, uh, uh, separating the spirit from the flesh. They basically said, Jesus had two portions. His, his spiritual self, uh, the spiritual work of Christ. And then there's the physical aspect of Jesus ministry. We're not supposed to worry about the physical. As long as you're following the spiritual directions of Christ, you can pretty much do whatever you want to with your body. Early church said, "No, not so fast. We don't think that's true." That could be what's going on with these Nicolaitans. Now, uh, whatever it is that was happening, I think it's safe to say that Jesus is not very happy with the church and he's calling them to task for their, um, their behavior. And notice, there's no commendation here. There is only the warning to repent. "Repent, or else I'm coming to you quickly. I will make war against these Nicolaitans and others with the sword of my mouth." We saw that back in the first chapter. This is a symbol of the purifying word that Jesus speaks. We had a lot of great conversation about that. "Jesus will come," he says, "and he will, uh, clean things up. He who has an ear, let him hear." Uh, and then, he says, um, where am I? "Oh, to, to those who overcome, I will give some of the hidden manna. I will give them a white stone and a new name written on that stone, which no one knows except the one who receives it." Wow, what a fabulous prize for overcoming. First of all, some of the hidden manna. You can see Exodus, chapter 16 for that. Remember, the manna in the wilderness, God miraculously gave them this dew-like substance that would fall. And then when it dried in the mornings, they would go out, pick up the, the cakes of it and, uh, they would eat it. It was their bread, it sustained them and kept them alive. Remember, they were only supposed to gather enough for one day at a time. You couldn't keep more than one day worth of manna. On the second day, it would disperse. The only time manna could be saved was for the Sabbath day and God allowed Aaron, the priest of the people, Moses' brother, to take some of the manna and put it in the ark of the covenant, where it is now preserved, wherever the ark of the covenant is. Christ says, "I will give some of the hidden manna to the one who will, uh, who overcomes and who perseveres." Literally, food from God. And the second piece is a white stone with a personalized, secret name written on it. The white stone comes from the, uh, process that they used during this time to admit people to, uh, certain parts of society, to a club, into a guild, uh, perhaps into the academy at one of these, uh, ancient places of learning. And everyone who was already in, if you were up for a membership, they would discuss you and then at a certain time, they would pass a, a vial around and everybody had a white stone and a black stone. And you would go and, and put in whichever you felt. And of course, as they took the stones out, as long as you were getting white stones, that was good. But if someone put in a black stone, that was a vote of no. Depending on the group you were being admitted to, sometimes for just one black stone, you would not be admitted. This is where we get the term black ball. Later, besides stones, that became balls. And, uh, you know, as long as everybody's putting in white, that's great. But the black one, eh, too bad. Jesus says, "I'm going to give those who overcome a white stone. You're in." And not only is it a stone, on that stone will be written a name known only to you. Kinda cool to think about, isn't it? What will your name be when you receive a white stone from Christ himself? Okay, thanks. Kinda long again, but there's a lot of stuff written in these chapters. We didn't quite finish chapter two of Revelation. We'll pick it up next time. It will be two more weeks before we have, uh, a, a review session on video, because we're not meeting next week around the July the 4th holiday. We'll be back on July the 12th. So, we will see you then. Thanks for tuning in.